Regular meeting for June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five will come in order. Roll call.
Michael Belizia.
Here.
Vincent Cutterford.
Here.
Joseph Seibert.
Here.
Teresa DeAndrea.
Here.
Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie.
Here. Indication on the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Lord, watch over us tonight as we conduct business to benefit our community. Guide our words and our thoughts. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forget to give him time to do the motion before you move on.
I have pulled three times. Okay, we need approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on May twenty-seventh and the vacancy board meeting on June third of two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, I got two corrections. On the attendance, you missed Jim Danauer. He was here. He's not on the list.
For which one?
On the twenty-third, twenty-seventh, for the regular meeting.
I have Sue on there. Okay.
And under the treasurer's report, the question I had asked is not what's on there. I had asked about the hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Well, that, you were talking about the expenses.
Yeah.
Well, that...
We'll go. Okay, we need an approval for the minutes of both meetings.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for both of the meetings, the twenty-seventh to the twenty, uh, June third.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post? Ayes have it. Okay, treasurer's report. Anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion. We accept the Borough Manager's Treasurer's Report.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Vincent Cutterford.
Yes.
Joseph Seibert.
Yes.
Michael Belizia.
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea.
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie.
Yes. Next item is approval of the bills. Anybody have any questions on any of the bills?
Yeah. For the entire month of June, if four departments are getting seven and a half rolls of stamps at five hundred and forty-seven...
Yes, we're buying stamps ahead because we're trying to build up because the price of stamps is going to be going up.
You sure that we can't get like a bulk rate? Because I know I asked you this before.
Right. We had checked. Our post office can't do it. And what we would have to do is what, run up to Hazelton or something up there?
To get a permit.
To get a permit.
And we would have to run them there all the time to mail them.
And it's...
It's not that cost effective.
It's not. It's really not cost effective.
Eighty-seven hundred dollars on stamps.
Yeah, well, you send a thousand letters out every month for bills.
And they're going up five cents a stamp.
I should say eleven hundred bills. And stamps are going. So we're trying to buy ahead for next year. Actually, next year, we should be covered.
All right, that was my question.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we need a motion and a second to approve the bills.
I'll make a motion. We approve the paying of the bills.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call.
Michael Belizia.
Yes.
Joseph Seibert.
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford.
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea.
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie.
Yes. Next item is other items of concern. Is there anything from the council?
I have one thing if I can. And this is, I guess, just addressed to the public or the audience. I don't get questioned about a whole lot out in the world. But one thing that does come up repeatedly is the effectiveness of our zoning officer. And I just would like to point out, somebody had asked about it last week and maybe start looking into it, digging in a little bit. But if you look for this year to date, for things like high grass, garbage, abandoned vehicles, apartments, all that stuff, Tom has issued one hundred and fifty-five citations, whatever they might be, but there's one hundred and fifty-five occurrences that he has applied in town. And we have how many homes in town, Harold?
About eleven hundred.
About eleven hundred. So, I mean, he is. And, and he did, I did speak to him today and he is reporting at least the, the new answer that we have by, by having that instant twenty-five dollar fine they get, where it used to be a big rigmarole and it takes forever for them to get anything out of it. It is not solving all of the problems, but it is solving some of them. That some people are, are being a little more active to fix the solution. But I, I think with one hundred and fifty-five citations for our town, I think is, is actually a pretty high number. So it's not like it's, he's only cited ten houses in town. That's, that's all. I, I just, I, I think Tom's doing a great job and I just wanted to say that out loud. That's all I had. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, anything from the audience? Bye, Georgia.
You're on.
Oh, okay, then.
Now.
I'd like to introduce myself. If you don't already know me, my name is Georgia Pharoah. And last year, I was asked to serve on the America Two Fifty Steering Committee. And I guess one of my jobs would be to get the word out there about this campaign. Now, the steering committee was established, the National Steering Committee, or Commission, I should say. It's not necessarily a committee. It's a commission, was established probably in two thousand and eighteen. And on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, America Two Fifty PA became the first official state to partner of the America Two Fifty National Event. One of the things I want to let everybody know is down, we were just talking about this, Ervin and I were talking about this. It seems like, and I'm finding this with working with everybody in Carbon County, that the southern part of the county knows everything. We do not up here. And I keep pushing, you know, what about over the mountain? Over the mountain, you know, you have towns and boroughs over here. So I'm working to try to get us to pull together to do some nice events. One of the things that they are asking, and I don't know if the borough did get it, there is a resolution that, I know Anand signed it. I see them on the website. But it is a resolution supporting America Two Fifty PA. There's twenty-three municipalities in Carbon County. And my fearless leader, Kim Worley, is a little concerned because there's five municipalities that have signed this resolution. There is a resolution that all the county governments had signed. There is one for city, towns, boroughs, municipalities, and there's also one for school districts to support this initiative. This initiative is going to take place next year. There is going to be a big kickoff in Carbon County in January. And it's to celebrate America's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. It's a seven, a semi-quinsentennial. And there's going to be a lot of things going on across the nation, across the state, and across the counties. A lot of the counties have already applied for some major matching grants. And there's things going on. And I know in our town, we could do something too. Weisport just got a five thousand dollar matching grant to put on a parade. The only thing is you have to have monies to match whatever you're requesting. It goes on to the state. There is a board. There is various, the governors are serving on this board, past and present. There's a lot of other associates on there from different industries, and they decide who gets this money. There are grants out there. People have got as much as twenty thousand dollars. And I think that we should try to pull together as a community. We do have a lot of service organizations. We have the Hill Climb represented. We have our festival in the park in August. And there's the museum. We have the library. We have different clubs in town. We need to pull together. Last week, we had a meeting and it wasn't very well attended, but I'm going to keep trying. We have one year coming in two weeks. July fourth will be upon us and exactly one year from that day will be the big celebration. Now, you don't necessarily have to have everything on the Fourth of July. There's different events and activities going on throughout the county. There is also different initiatives, different platforms. I did, I did make some copies of some of the paperwork that I'll leave here for you council members to look at. But there is a lot of different things out there. The Pocono Tourist Bureau has been working with us. They have a sponsorship letter that will be going out to some of the businesses. Marlin Kistner, I know some of you know her. I know Joe knows her. She's been working with us and we're grateful to have her. Any of the monies that we do raise for anything that we perceive to do will go through the Pocono Tourist Bureau. Nobody wanted to take on the responsibility of having an account and, you know, having their social and everything else out there. So she graciously signed us up under the Pocono Tourist Bureau. And Monroe County is also doing that. Monroe County, if you look, there is a lot of different things that they are doing. And they have gotten some major funding. So as council members, I am asking you to come on board. I think we can do a lot in our town. It doesn't have to be anything elaborate, but it could be something fun and just to celebrate America's two hundred and fiftieth. I do have some paperwork here, like I said, to hand out to you. Some of the platforms, and especially in Pennsylvania, there are committees, okay? But in Carbon County, the one I am serving on is Service Two Fifty. It's honoring the service and sacrifice of our military members in Carbon County, our veterans and our first responders. They have tourism and marketing, which the Pocono Tourist Bureau is going to be working on. There's business and industry. There's to preserve, to educate people about our histories. We have history in this town, lots of history. Arts and culture. Educate our students, learning to inspire and celebrate the next generation. Because when we're gone, the next fifty, most of us probably will not be here, let's face it. But when we're gone, we need somebody to carry on our traditions and our celebrations. The community care, caring for healthy and resilient commu, our community, the health care, the human services, the volunteerism in our county. Land, water, and wildlife. If anybody is a DCNR, they're also involved with this, you know, parks, whatever, commissions. And I think it's going to be good, but we need to work together. So I'm here to ask council and our community to, let's get together and plan something neat for next year. There's a lot of things going on. There is bells across PA. The Pocono Tourist Bureau put up ten thousand dollars and sponsored this Liberty Bell. It's a facsimile fiberglass. They had, where artists participate, they're going to take different things that the artist has done, pictures, photos, and somehow transpose them onto this bell. We haven't decided exactly where the bell will be housed. We're a little concerned. I don't know if communities will want to take on the responsibility of a ten thousand dollar facsimile of the Liberty Bell. But we're hoping, you know, we can get it in the county so people can travel. But they're just some of the things that we are doing. We've been working very hard. And it's more than I thought it would be, but it's fun. I'm meeting a lot of other people. We have some really great workers, some really great enthusiastic people on our, our steering committee. And I just want to get everybody involved. We got to do something for next year. So, okay. Thank you.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
You said this is going to start in January of two thousand and twenty-five.
It's a big kickoff. Every county will get money to have a big kickoff. So, and the clock is ticking down right now.
We could do it all year long.
Yeah.
Our first Hill Climb event's like June seventh, eighth, or eighth, ninth.
That's right, yeah.
So we would be able to do our thing that weekend?
Yeah, you could probably, yes, yes. The Weisport got the five thousand dollar grant. They're doing a parade on Fourth of July. But there's a, in July third, in Philadelphia, there's a huge count, our state parade. You know, we actually talked about getting somebody to drive a coal truck down there because we're the anthracite region to participate in the parade. I mean, it, there's so many ideas and so many things out there. But I think as a community, when you see some of these little communities, if Weisport can do something great, like a parade, I'm sure Wesley can do stuff also. I really think we can do something great. It doesn't have to be anything elaborate. Some of the counties are actually putting on events that are costing somebody seventy-five thou, or seventy-five dollars to get into. I said, our county is not rich. We need something good, fun, not necessarily free, but something old fashioned that we could do, you know? So, but we have a lot of resources here. People don't realize that. I would like to see us and we have, and the thing is, I keep reminding them, you have other communities up over the mountain besides Weatherly. We have Tresco. We have Beaver Meadows. I know Beaver Meadows, I did talk to the secretary up there. She, they did sign this resolution. And it's just supporting the event. There's no financial responsibility or anything like that in it. But I will send, give you a copy and it is on the website. I gave everybody a brochure except Lori. I gave you some trinkets there. So research the website. It's really, really interesting, some of the things that are on there and some of the people that are involved with this. I mean, Veterans Association, different, the governor supports it, the auditor, or the auditor, the state auditor. There's just, I was just reading a bunch of them today. It's really going to be big. And the key words are epic. All, all events are to be epic. It's supposed to be educational, preserve our history, innovate, and celebrate. So everything should be epic. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Georgia. Anybody have any questions for? Any other items of concern from the public?
Hi, you all know me. I'm Beth Parker. I usually ask questions. The first question I have is, what's going on with the renovations at the park? Is that, have you awarded bids or?
No, there's, what we had to do is, we had put the bids out originally for one general contractor.
Right.
So we had, we looked at it and we had our engineering firm break them down into individual bids now. So what you're doing is they had to set up all new bid packages. So what you're, instead of doing one full bid for excavation, for paving, and for fencing, we now broke it down into the individual three categories to have them do it. But what you had to do, what the engineers had to do is break everything down.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that, but have you awarded bids or have they been put out or yet?
We're going to be going out to bid, I would say, within the next week or two.
Okay, my second question is, everybody's talking about the waterfall downtown. Is that going to be repaired or not?
I don't know that we have it in our budget for this year to do it. A lot of our focus is going to be to get the park finished up. Now, the park is a grant, but it does take a lot of our time, you know, in coordinating that along with all the other grants we're working on. I would probably look and bring something to council that they could look at it next year to do something.
How long has it been down?
I have no idea.
So the center of our town has been down and nobody's done anything about it?
Yeah.
Okay. And my final question is in regard to Norman. What happened to that hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Okay, what happened? I went to Harold the next day and he explained it. What happened is the hundred and ten thousand dollars did come from the electric department. It was transferred over. It actually, right now, the borough's in a distressed financial situation. So some of the bills didn't get paid. So the money was actually transferred in. And that, that's where the money was, came from.
Why is the borough in a financial problem?
Everything's going up.
Maybe there's some things that should be put more energy into one thing and things that shouldn't be worried about shouldn't be worried about.
There, we have people working on that, professionals.
Thank you.
That are looking at it.
Any other items of concern from the public? Okay, we're going to go into first item of business. First item of business is a presentation of recognition for two of our doctors that are retiring. I'll try to read them. I want to apologize in advance. My voice is going, so it's a libel of case right out.
Okay, the borough of Wesley proclamation and recognition for Dr. Amelia Sacarusho. June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas Dr. Amelia Sacarusho has served this community and healthcare system for the past thirty-two years. Amelia is known for her compassion, respect, deep caring for patients, and her exceptional medical skills. And whereas Amelia Sacarusho had come to Wesley in March of nineteen ninety-three as the primary doctor at St. Joseph's Satellite in Wesley Plaza. Nineteen ninety-eight, she opened her own practice, A and E Medical, with her husband Adrian in two thousand. Amelia moved her practice to the First Street Office in two thousand and sixteen after twenty-three years of private practice. Dr. Sacarusho closed her private practice and joined Lehigh Valley Health Network, continued to serve Wesley community for a total of thirty-two years. And whereas Wesley Borough Council acknowledges and admires her excellence of care for patients and citizens of Wesley, and now therefore, be resolved, by Norman Ritchie, the mayor of Wesley, Pennsylvania, has hereby acknowledged the twenty, thirty-two years of dedication, commitment, professional care provided by, to her patients and the community. Her thirty-two years of exemplified service as a healthcare professional is the type of care we all aspire to have. And witness thereon this twenty-third day, June of this year, of our Lord, twenty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Doing good. You're doing good. Do you want a drink?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next one is the borough of Wesley proclamation and recognition of Dr. Adrian Sacarusho. June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas Dr. Adrian Sacarusho has served this community and healthcare systems for the past thirty-two years. Adrian is known for his compassion, respect, deep caring for his patients, and his exceptional medical skills. And whereas Adrian Sacarusho has started in March of nineteen ninety-three as a primary doctor at St. Joseph's Satellite in Freeland. Nineteen ninety-eight, he opened his own practice, A and E, with his wife at the First Street Office. In two thousand and sixteen, after twenty-three years of private practice, Dr. Sacarusho closed his private practice and joined Lehigh Valley Health Network, continuing to serve the Wesley community for a total of fourteen years. And whereas Wesley Borough Council acknowledges and admires his excellence of care to his patients and citizens of Wesley. And therefore, be resolved, by Norman Ritchie, the mayor of Wesley, Pennsylvania, has hereby acknowledged the thirty-two years of dedication, commitment, and professional care provided to his patients and the community. His thirty-two years of exemplified service as a healthcare professional is the type of care we all aspire to have. And witness thereon this twenty-third day, June in the year of the Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Could you go to the microphone, please, so we can pick up the recording?
This is from both of us. I thank you very, very much. We thank you very much. It's really an honor to be here and serve this community for over thirty years. The, the town of Weatherly gave us trust, respect, support, friendship. And it really made this, this place the home away from home. I will, I will miss you all terribly, but I promise we will have you in our hearts and in our memories. Thank you very much for everything.
Mary, gonna give you a cell phone when I make a panic.
Okay, the next order of business is to have a motion to send a letter of interest to DCED.
I make a motion. We send a letter of interest to DCED.
We have a first and a second?
I'll second.
We have a second.
We have one.
Did you like me?
You can third it, Joe.
Yes.
You can third it, Joe.
And then Vinnie seconded it, right?
You can go third.
I have a hard time distinguishing between the two of them.
What do I got to do?
You could go third, I said, if you want.
We already have a second.
We had a motion and a second. Okay. That's great. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Ayes have it. Third item of business is the discussion on Wood Street.
They asked, they asked, somebody, somewhere in the audience asked what it is.
What is DCED? What does that mean? What's the acronym for?
It's Department of Community and Economic Development.
Okay.
They have many different programs that we could take advantage of. And we have to send a letter of intent to be part of it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good job.
Any other questions on that? Okay, we're going back to the discussion on Wood Street. As you know, every, the borough had sent a letter to...
As you know, every, the borough has sent a letter to the residents on, uh, West Main, the rocks. And I believe we got no responses. Oh, we get?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that should, some of them are in here, I think.
Yeah. Some of our council is saying we didn't vote on number two. You had a motion and a second. Did we actually vote on it, Laurie?
Well, he's, he just said all in favor. So it was general acclaim.
General acclaim.
General acclaim.
Okay, as long as it got, as long as it got.
They're not all, they're not all.
I'm gonna make sure that it's not. Okay. Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
I'm all over it.
Got it. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we did get some responses. Most of them were on Facebook.
Yeah, we did too.
It appears most of the people are in favor of making Wood Street a one-way. What is council's feeling?
I, I got the report just like everybody else did. I think it was pretty much three to three, or thirty to three, I think. Thirty were for it and three people were against it. Um, it didn't interfere with, the police didn't see a problem, the, uh, and I didn't do any of this legwork, I just know what the report says, but, um, waste management or whoever it was, that, that was all okay with them. So I think it's overwhelming and if it's gonna solve some problems, then I would say that my, my, I would make the motion to proceed to the next step with it. And which direction will it be one-way?
Down.
Down.
It would be toward West Main.
Towards West Main. Okay, is that south?
No, north.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll second it. Roll call.
Joseph Cybert.
Yeah.
Vincent Cutterford.
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea.
Yes.
Michael Belizia.
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
Norman Ritchie.
Yes.
And so we have to advertise it, so I accept that motion as a motion to advertise it to her at the July meeting. You can actually vote on the ordinance change, that makes it one-way. And then there will, the gentleman's not here. But then it would be, I understand that there would be like a one-month, like an interim for it.
Yes.
Well, we need a, we need a sign, because you're gonna need to have a sign at some point too.
Yes, what he's referring to is that generally we give a one-month moratorium for people that go up the wrong way. As far as ticketing, we give warnings.
Right, and basically, you're not, it's not through traffic, anybody that's going up that, up that hill is gonna be somebody that lives up there, so. And within a month's time, yes, they, they should be made aware and alert. And if it turns into be a problem, we can always reverse it, right?
Yes.
It's just there's some unforeseen headache to this.
Yep.
It's not concrete.
Okay, roll call. Oh, we did that. Okay, next item of business. Items up for sale on municipal.
We had requested two items. One is the flatbed trailer, the military one we have in the back, and also the pool slide, you know, that we had.
Anybody have any questions? Need a motion to advertise the two items on municipal?
I'll make a motion, we advertise those two items on municipal.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Fifth item of business, discussion about fishing at the park.
I just wanted to, to bring it up to your attention. When we had gone through and we had done the, how should I say, the change in the ordinance to the park ordinance in regards to fishing, we had set it up, you know, in a specific way of doing it. Not so certain that that would be a feasible way, you know, where we're saying you have to pay per pound for each fish that you catch. And, uh, and just wanted to put it out to council to see if they wanted to do something different than that. I mean, we're heading into July here and, uh, I have to get a commercial scale, have it certified by the state, you know, because you're selling a product at that point. Or would you rather just, uh, forget about fishing this year? Or just allow people, charge them a, a flat rate of ten dollars, fifteen, twenty, whatever, come and fish and you have a limit of whatever you want to put on it, two, three fish? I would recommend, though, if you do something like that, you cannot, uh, catch and release only because of the fact that we have a small pond area and sometimes on a catch and release, the fish can get sick and diseased and it could affect the other, you know, fish in the pond. So from what we hear from, uh, hatcheries that raise these fish, they do not recommend any catch and release, you know, in any form because of the health of the, the, the stock that you do have. So I'm just putting it out to you, if you'd like to, to look at changing this or what you'd like to do with this program. And in any case, uh, in order to have this program, we would have to hire people to manage it, you know, there, so.
I know you started the shade. What are we at with that, is that?
It's, I would say we're probably about eighty-five percent to ninety percent finished with it.
So how long would it take to get it up and running? I, the only way I would really wanna do it, simplify it, like, put like a limit, maybe three fish or something, per person, per day. You have, I don't know if you wanna go way in and out, try it.
That's too much.
That's a lot of work, you know, I, I'd like to see it go, but, I mean, how many hours are you gonna, are we gonna, what's gonna be, five days a week, six, seven?
Well, it's, there again, it's a matter of finding people to, to do it. You're, you're gonna have to probably put a staff of at least three on rotating.
At least three people?
I would think, because not every, not that they're gonna work forty hours a week, but, you know, some people may have other commitments or something else, so you're, you're looking at part timers and you're gonna cover, you know, from the morning hours into the early evening.
Like, and they're not at the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, three, four days a week, something.
Right. So you, you gotta have the coverage, but, and also on weekends, so.
And it's gonna be seven days?
It's entirely up to you. I mean, we could make it five days, you could make it, uh, from the middle of the week over to weekend. You could, you could do it any way you wanna do it. Or just make it weekends. It's entirely.
I don't, I think seven days might be a lot, right, until he gets his staff built up? I mean, I don't know, I'm just running.
If I'm staffing anything at this point.
Yeah.
I would at least dip our toes in the water, try weekends and just see how it goes. I would forego the scale, just see if we can, if we get one dollar out of it.
Yeah.
My thought would be like Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, ten bucks, a limit three, you know? That would be a general.
By waiting, would it let the population?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
By waiting, would it let the population of fish get bigger for next year?
Yeah.
As opposed to taking them out, they'd be more.
There, there would be more, but of course you have wildlife working their way through the fish also. Between the eagles, the foxes, and the raccoons, I think everybody's eating well.
Anybody else have any comments?
I kinda like either the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday or the weekend deal.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have anybody else to go with it. I don't, you don't wanna tie, make people, promise people work for the whole summer and all of a sudden, two weeks later, you know, they don't.
Right.
Things ain't working out and you don't have work.
Norman, could I just ask, would that ten dollars be every time you fish?
Yes.
That's a lot for our kids.
You have to pay for the fish. And they're not cheap either.
Well, I know that, but five dollars per kid to fish every day, that's a lot of money. Why can't you make it like for a season or something?
Well, for right now, we don't know how it's gonna work or if it's gonna work. So I really don't wanna tie up that kind of money for two or three months now for somebody.
Right, but the people of the borough are not asked about making that fishing thing successful.
That wasn't my choice.
No, no, Beth, but in all honesty, and I'm not trying to be the devil's advocate, but I, 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 I sometimes feel, I sometimes feel like people just don't really understand a lot of the ins and outs. And until you sit here and you go through things and, and, and you do the math and you realize the numbers, things get a little overwhelming. When, 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 when citizens ask the question roughly, why did we get here and how did we get here? And why do we have financial troubles? Because what did you, just tell me, the number was, when we were running the pool, how much did it cost to keep that pool open?
Twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a season.
Twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, right? Do I wish the kids could swim? Absolutely, I love it, it's fantastic. But when they say that there's, there's no kids down there at all, or there's two kids in there, and the borough repeatedly keeps spending twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars every year for something that's not working? Like, that's how, because we don't wanna, you don't wanna give it up, you don't wanna give up the stand, you don't wanna take any of these things away from the people. But we, we have to try to find where, where we're spending these monies and stuff.
Well, my point is exactly, the borough has no choice on those fish being put in there to begin with. Right? So let's look at the kids in this borough. When my son grew up in this town, you said Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, there was a program for the kids that did not have a parent to sit with them for eight hours a day. Okay, there were things in this town. Mr. Peddler says the insurance, the cost of the insurance, that's why. Is there insurance on that pool now?
Of course, we cover all of it, but it's not swimming.
It's still insurance.
No, no, it's not the same.
Is it a different number or?
There's, there's a difference in liability for people swimming and having, and the pool being there. But you're gonna pay insurance on all of our properties.
It's, and at one time, we drained that pool so nobody would fall through the ice. Now it's not draining, because somebody had an idea to put those fish in there.
Right.
Right, so now the borough is expected to pay for them? Drain the pool!
I don't think we can do that with the fish in it.
You can give the fish to the winning commission.
You know?
If our kids can't swim in that pool, then I don't see a reason.
They weren't using it to begin with.
The pool wasn't really being used.
They weren't using the pool to begin with at the end. I would've been out of my head if it was a no-exception.
There was still two kids swimming. I grew up in that pool. That pool was for Eric, okay?
Them days are long gone.
No, I disagree. There should be something in this borough for our kids to do besides paying to go fishing every day.
A lot of the problem is people have pools now. When I was a kid, I didn't, I didn't have a pool, but now it's so.
I agree, and a lot of people can't afford that pool either.
Plenty of Walmart for three, four hundred dollars, people are putting up in their backyards left and right. So that takes kids away from swimming, because they invite their friends over, or whatever, and they don't come down.
You know what, I'll be honest with you, I know I'm not supposed to be speaking now, but my son refused to swim in your rain apart pool when he was a kid. We put a pool in our backyard and he had to swim out there because it was better. So, I mean, I see people with pools and their kids would still swim in the park. If you don't wanna let swimming, fine, close it down. Forget any insurance, anything.
You still have, you still have to insure.
You still have to have insurance.
You have to have insurance.
Not if there's no water in it.
You still have to have, there's a liability. There's a liability on it.
For everything, there's a liability.
But it's not gonna be what it is if there's water in it.
There's a liability to walk into this room.
That goes with life.
The insurance companies are capitalizing on it.
You also look at the playground.
Yeah.
That's insurance that helps too, because, God forbid, some kid, that's why all the good, all the good rides are gone, the merry-go-round's gone. The witch's hat's gone.
Witch's hat's gone, yes.
Those are the fun ones, as long as they're in it.
Yeah.
But tell me, as a council, what does our borough offer our kids?
A safe town, a clean town.
Basketball courts.
Kids, kids, little kids, what would we offer our kids besides the help they have to play with?
They, they did not use the pool.
Like, they didn't use it.
They didn't. What can I tell you? You can look at, first of all, what happened, turn around and you're, you're spending for lifeguards, which is a big expense.
I understand.
And it's difficult to get them. And then the second aspect is we did have to put some type of chemical in that water to at least make it somewhat safe for the kids to swim in.
Okay, I understand.
And that's where the cost comes in. But then, there was an issue for twelve years where we charged no resident anything to swim in that pool. You have absolutely.
Who's doing was that?
Huh?
Who's doing was that, councils? Because when I was a kid, I had to pay to swim in that pool.
Okay, whoever's it was, that went for almost.
You didn't get the kids off the couch to go to the pool, because of your devices.
Then shut it down totally, get rid of the fish.
I'm, I'm for fishing.
Why are you letting insurance for that area?
Even when that pool was free, I got out of there alive. You might have had one or two, you know? When it was free, it was, when I grew up, they used, but that pool hasn't been used, but eight or ten kids a week, if that. Got it, Joe?
My name is Joe Thomas. I was a former councilman for the Weatherly Borough. If you wanna point a finger at blaming for the fish program, here I stand. When I was on Borough Councils, we entertained the idea, because of the cost factor of the pool and the cost of the chemicals and the cost of the liability, we entertained the possibility of creating fun fishing. Our first arrival of fish was donated. Our second arrival of fish was donated. Substantial amount of fish both times. Originally, what we had thought, which, which would be a good idea, we have a lot of senior citizens in this town that can't any longer drive to their favorite fishing hole. They have no means of transportation, they have no means of somebody taking them. So our thought process was that we would introduce fishing since there were no children swimming because it's a sign at a times. It's a sign at a times of not coming to the park, it's a sign at a times of not getting involved. We had a, a clear body of water, so we entertained that, it was very successful. We were going to have people signed up to do fly fishing instructing. Harold, if you remember, we decided we were not gonna use any trouble hooks.
Right.
We weren't gonna use any lures with, uh, with multiple hooks. They were gonna be all, uh, single hooks with no trouble on them so that if something would happen and it was in the lake, somebody wouldn't step on that. We were gonna have individuals from the both nursing facilities. It was gonna be a nicer thing for the community based on the senior population who used to fish, but now can't. Like, and as I said, they can't get to their, to their, their favorite fishing hole. So that's the way the procedure went. So you're looking at the individual who had to brainstorm, you're looking at the individual who brought it to the table, and you're looking at the individual who presented to council, we discussed it, and we made that motion, and we made that move, and here we stand today. Yes, things have changed from a liability standpoint, things have changed from a population standpoint, but right now, we're gonna offer some fishing. We still have an opportunity, a, and again, it has to be a monetary amount because we're no longer gonna get donations, we're gonna have to purchase them. So if we're purchasing, we're saving twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars by not fishing, I mean, by not swimming, it's a far less amount that we would spend to buy the fish. So that's, that's the nature of the fishing program. Thank you.
I agree, Mr. Thomas, except how many years of evidence is taken and put into a test? And nobody's fished in there yet.
It's only a year.
It's only a year.
No, it's not only a year.
The council just went over this last year, you know, as far as the.
There's been fishing there longer than three years.
I think, I think.
Yes, there has been, Mr. Thomas?
No.
When did it fish though? When you are even on council?
Joe, that was just your last year of council, near the end of the last year of council.
Last year of my, of my term.
Right, so it would probably be, this is the second.
I was probably, let's just say, part turn, like, two and a half years.
But then after the study, then, 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 didn't, didn't the gang push come in and like, or fishing, like, then they come in and like, test everything, test the water?
Yeah, we had, we had the water, we had, uh.
And monitor it for a little bit?
The water.
Yep.
We have our own testing ground, we have the testing grounds from the school. We have our own testing ground, we have the testing grounds from the school, we also have the fishing gang commission come in and regularly do testing before we even put fish in to determine what was.
The hatchery did that.
And if you remember, we had to knock the chemicals in for one year.
Right.
Okay, another question now, since you said about the nursing homes and the high rises and stuff like that, those people don't get a lot of money, how are they gonna pay? They get forty-five dollars a month out of their money. So if they come four days, that's their forty dollars. How are they gonna pay to fish in there?
This sounds terrible, but I mean, we're all in our own financial position, so is the borough. So we can only, I mean, we're doing something nice, we're trying to figure out how it's gonna work, but you can't let people fish for nothing.
The cost factor of people fishing is a weird thing, you know? It's like everything else, a price tag that comes with everything.
Okay, and I'm saying to you, you're saying you're wondering for the people up at Weatherwood or whatever the name of it is, Heritage Hill and everything, where are they gonna get the money to fish? Four days a month, that's it, they can't fish anymore, it's ten dollars every time you fish. We don't have to work that hard.
If we do that, if we do that, what's gonna happen is for the people, everybody fish, we'll fish it out and we'll die.
I'm saying let's fish for free, I'm saying maybe do a license for this season, if that's what you want.
I'm not gonna make any money. What kind of rate do you want on a license for the year?
Maybe twenty dollars.
I don't I don't think the original was ten dollars a day, was it? It was so much and then you paid.
Yeah, you paid.
This is this is just a bridge, stopgap to like, to it wasn't a full thing, not every.
Yeah.
Not next year.
Yeah, what we were talking about here previously is that you would go and catch the fish, we would weigh it, and you paid so much a pound, that's what.
You didn't pay the fish, you paid for the fish you took out.
Yes.
So if you if you fished all day and didn't catch nothing, it didn't cost you a penny.
Right.
But if you only, any fish you removed from the water.
Right.
But again, we're again, money being money, we don't have money for scales and all the rest of the stuff because this is just, this is just one needle on the pine tree here.
Yep, and that method is that you're gonna take the fish home, and it's not cheap. I I will say that, you know, you you start paying six, I don't know what we said, six dollars or seven dollars a pound for a fish, you know? Well, trout itself is expensive if you buy it out, but you'd have to be, you know, a real fish advocate.
Can I say something? I I fish a lot, a lot. And I think, I fish at some A-trout ponds, which is a business, and they charge by the rod. It's, I think, seven dollars a rod, and you're allowed free fish. If you use two rods, it's four dollars more for the second rod and you're allowed two more fish. So you'd be allowed a total of five fish for two rods. The place is packed, packed. If you're not there at five-thirty or six o'clock in the morning.
And where is this?
Orwigsburg.
Orwigsburg?
Yeah.
Where do the fish come from? I was just gonna say, we gotta find out where they get their fish.
The owner's name is Leon Weaver, and he has race wings where he buys fish and he supplies, and he stocks, and Joe, you know.
Yep.
He goes around, him, Big Brown Trout Hatchery, Alrod Hitzville, there are another one that go around and stock, and yeah, and if you, with a municipality, maybe you'll be a group rating, but you gotta charge.
Something.
There has to be, these fish, that costs a lot of money. In turn, I mean, all their jobs are decent, they need oxygen levels put on them to supply oxygen for the fishing route.
Yeah, you pay for them, yeah. I understand.
I bought two, I bought two thousand five hundred trout in Paradise a year, two thousand, I mean, twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five hundred fish in Paradise, and cost me about twelve thousand dollars. It's over a dollar five, dollar ten, a dollar fifteen an inch. So if you get a lunker, which is eighteen inches or so, can you imagine the price tag now? And do you charge a tax, dog per pound for a fish? Is it taxable? See for a municipality, I don't think it would be.
No, it wouldn't be.
Plus, no, if your cat tags is in, but there is a thirty dollar delivery fee.
Yeah.
Thirty dollar delivery fee.
Yeah, the delivery, we.
I'm too sorry, huh?
Yeah.
But I mean, five rod would be probably the most beneficial.
Right, and that's what we're looking for, something, you know, beneficial. I think the method that we had originally talked about was just a little bit too expensive, you know? And it would be expensive on our end too to have people there to constantly monitor and, you know.
Right.
You're better off just being able for someone to come in, pay a flat rate, whatever, you limit them on their fish, and that's it.
I I think, I don't know how it would be with ice fishing, but now.
Too much liability.
You go to like that arena.
Yeah.
Now, do they need a license?
I can't hear you.
The dam doesn't, no. The dam doesn't hear you.
No, no, the dam thinks it's their property.
If you charge, if you charge somebody to fish.
So they don't need a fishing license?
No, it would not need a fishing license.
No.
Jim, do you pay for what you take, or is it just the rod cost?
It's just the rod, but you're only allowed by fish.
If you got two rods.
Two rods.
Three per rod, and then if you purchase and use your second rod, you can keep two more fish.
Yeah, it was four dollars, you said, for the second rod?
Excuse me?
You, was it four dollars for the second rod?
Yeah, it was four dollars. Now, he could, I, it's been probably a couple of years since I've been there, and I'm gonna estimate, it could be more than price, like, because everything has run off, it's, you know, it's still, is it? So, the place is packed.
Where it gets pricey is when they have the catfish.
Yeah.
Who can get us a price sheet from this place? Who who can?
Where is it online?
Tell me where I can find it.
Yeah, that's the A-trout ponds. Now, like, Leon, he retired, and I'm not sure who is actually running it now, but Big Brown Trout Hatchery out in.
I didn't hear, S and H?
S and A.
S and A, okay.
A-trout ponds, in Orwigsburg. I can get you that phone number.
Well, you said the first rod is seven dollars, right?
Yep.
So to use two rods is eleven dollars.
Yeah, I mean, you can you can charge whatever you want, if you think, you know, for a junior.
But we're just saying, basically, ten dollars is actually in the ballpark.
That's what we were saying.
So for juniors, you can give them, if they live in the borough, give them a discounted rate, or seniors, veterans, and everybody else, but that's, you'd have to work out the funding.
There is zero chance the first thing we do with this, it's gonna work correctly. So I say we get this pricing or whatever, get something out, let something happen, even if it's for the weekend, let's let's start digging the problems out instead of another summer goes by, we didn't do nothing.
I like the two, I like the weekend deal. Because I like the weekend deal, because that's, you know, you'll get a pretty good idea how it's working if you do it for a few weekends.
Like, what do you gotta be, like, eighteen, fourteen, fifteen?
Eighteen. Well, we have to double check with this one. Age on help for this.
I would take a fight sixteen.
Yeah, they're not doing anything.
No, they're not doing anything with every motor or stuff, but I'm thinking they're.
I'm just kinda curious, do like, let's see if they have their summer jobs and whatever, but if they wanted to pick up extra in the weekend.
Sixteen would probably work, we're not having them work with any, anything else.
And again, find them help.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Next in policy.
Because the stand's eighteen, eighteen years old, right, Jim?
What's that?
The stand is eighteen because of the fryers and stuff, right?
I don't remember. I know I looked at before, it depends on what what you have to pay to fish. I'm not sure if the stand with the fryer.
The fryers and the slices and that, they have to be.
Oh, it's Facebook, I'm sorry.
Eighteen.
With anybody under sixteen, every hour, they have to have a ten-minute break too, so remember that. You can hire under sixteen, but they have to have a ten-minute break every hour.
Make a tough kids out there, I think.
Yeah.
They have their breaks.
Yeah.
Hey, so what do we wanna do with the fish?
Do we get the prices?
I'm sorry?
Do we get some, call these places, get some prices, right?
Yeah, is there anything stopping us from proceeding, or just saying, continue on with the with the shack?
No, no, we can, we'll continue on with the shack.
And then we can make a decision, we can have this information, I'm assuming, in a day or two, right? We could share it amongst us, and then we can have this this hammered out.
Yeah.
Hey, next item of business, update on the Hudsondale PennDOT project.
We had, we met with the the engineers of the project, also the PennDOT personnel, Verizon, and the contractor to go over some of the basic moves of the utilities on this on this project. And it was primarily, the meeting that we had was just for the utilities. And utilities are Verizon, naturally, and us. We have our primary on there, our three-phase primary, and we have our secondary feeding, you know, some of the houses along that stretch where you see where the barricades are, and that, that's the area of work that's gonna be done. So what we did was, we pretty much had worked with their engineers and their utility people, and we told them that we wanna move as quickly as possible off of those poles. There's gonna be six poles removed from the bridge down that have to be taken out so that they can work on the wall. And in the meantime, they're looking at actually starting the project in 2026. What we wanna do is, we wanna get our utilities off of those poles. I don't know how you guys feel, but when you look at that wall, I don't think it's gonna make it to 2026. So what we said to them, we wanna move exponentially and get moving off of these poles. We had secured easements right of ways to put poles on three private properties, and primarily, what we're looking at is, we have to service the people, I don't know how to explain it to them, you know where the 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 wall is there, going down on your right side, the houses that are on top of that hill are the ones that we have to service, and also Warner's old garage, we have to service that, and with secondary. So what we did is, we secured easements from from the property owners that we could put the poles on their property, and certainly not in PennDOT right-of-way, only because if we go into their right-of-way, we have to get what's called an HOP, occupancy permit, which is a ton of paperwork, just to put a pole in there right-of-way. So we secured them. And then we were informed, and I had informed the project manager, and she was here, it was Laura Montgomery, she was here last year to do a presentation on the project, and I had informed her that we're ready to move our secondaries off of those poles, and that we had found also our our primary change, let me explain something to you. If you look on the top of the poles, there's three wires at the very top, and they come all the way up to the bridge, and then they cut across to a switch that's right there on the north side of the bridge. That's what we use for our back feed. So if, we have three circuits in town, A, B, and C. This side of town is the C circuit, and then we have the A and B on the other side. Now, what we can do up at Weatherwood, we can switch between A and B. If something went wrong with B, we could take A phase and feed B. And the same thing here, we could take B phase and feed C or C and feed B. But we have to be able to get our 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 primary to that switch. So that, for the last six poles, is gonna be gone, we have to take that primary down. But we have primary right by Figus's garage, we just have to extend it one length and we can tie into that switch that we have our back feed available for this side of town again. So we're in the process of of pulling all of this together right now, but Laura had called us after I, we had our meeting, and we said, hey, we wanna go, we were gonna do this right now, we're gonna start on it. She called, and the mayor was there for the call, and they told us, oh, sorry, you have a lot of paperwork and things that you have to do before you can move your utility lines. And what they informed us that we have to do is, we have to go through their software system, utility relocation management system. And we downloaded the manual for it, one hundred and seventy-eight pages of user manual for this software. So we're in the process right now of wading our way through their systems that we can get these, our secondaries off, and then work on our primaries to get them off of there. The only lines that we, that would be left on there would be Verizon and Breeze Line, you know, on there. But again, I was pushing it to get it done this summer, only because with hurricane season now in in season, they're calling for ten named storms. We could get any remnants of any of those storms up here, and that wall will probably go down along with our utility poles. So we're working very strongly on getting our poles moved on there. And again, and we also talked with the engineers that when they're reconstructing the wall, that the poles that are taken out for them to do the wall, that they go back into the same position, but make provisions in your construction that we don't have to drill down for them, that they make the provision that we can drop our poles in and backfeed, you know, at that point. I mean, to go through all that work and then for have us to come in and then augur down to put them in, they can make the provision and they agreed to that, you know? So that's a good bonus on our part at that point. But once we get our utilities off of those poles, then it's up to Breeze Line to take care, or Verizon primarily, to take care of the rest of the poles, you know, what they're gonna do. But that's pretty much where we're at. I'm just leery about the weather and the rising of this stream one time to take down that wall, and then it's gonna be panic time, and I don't wanna panic. I want us to be ready and say, oh, jeez, doesn't affect us. So that's that's pretty much where we're standing on it. We just have to get through their mountain of paperwork.
Anybody have any more questions? Okay, the last item of business is the discussion to fill the vacant council seat.
Nobody has anything, all don't have nominee Gregory Walters.
Is there a process, Jim? There, the process usually is exactly that, someone nominates, you accept the nomination, there's no second, then if someone else wants to nominate someone else, and you go through, whether you have one or five nominees, and then council votes on them in that same order.
Individually, right?
What's that?
Yeah, individually.
So who did you nominate, Joe?
Gregory Walters.
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 Yeah, W A L T W R S.
Okay.
I nominate Bill Thomas.
Wait a minute, don't we need a second?
No.
No, but I need the opportunity for a second on that, since we're talking about it.
Nope, nope, just need the nomination.
I nominate Suzie Danham.
Jim?
Okay, we have three nominations. Greg Walters would be first.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Then you should have a motion and a second to close the nominations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Norman, can I ask one question?
No, not when we're in the middle of a motion. No, until you have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to know if it was the same as when you voted for the mayor.
She doesn't listen.
I don't either, I'm sorry.
Real call.
Jeffrey Miller?
What what are we voting on? Closing the nominations, you have a motion and a second to close the nominations. I lost track for a second. I understand. I'm okay now.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Then you go through with the first one being Greg Walters, and see how many votes you get for him, and if you have four, he's the person, if he doesn't, then you go to the next person.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Miller? Okay, roll call for Greg Walters.
Joe, question.
Yeah, I nominate Walters.
No, no.
You already did it, now we're voting for Weatherwood.
I'll vote for Walters then.
Okay, we're gonna do roll call, but he has a question too.
Oh.
Oh, no, no, I know, I just, I'll put his hand, I'm sorry, it's getting crazy fast.
No, that's why I'm trying to keep tabs.
Okay.
Okay, so Joseph Seibert, this is your voting for Gregory Walters.
Yes.
Okay. Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Norman Ritchie?
No.
Okay, well, it's, it's, um, it's five to one.
Yeah.
No, he's not here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
I'll second it. Who seconded?
Teresa.
Teresa.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close.
Personnel, sir, employees.
Have a little seat.